First one is for June, July 6th. Let's see who was here, Mike, Martha, Naomi, and Tony. So we're all here. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as printed. Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 5-0-0. I will sign these. And July 17th, Mike, Tony, Martha, and Naomi. So we're all here again. Entertain a motion to accept as printed. Second by Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Warrants. No payroll, just this one?
Just that one.
Okay. I don't need that. All I need is this. Check warrant number five for $40,371.29. Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Items over 1,000. Fluent IMS, $1,100.
Department of Public Safety.
Okay. And GA Bow Fuel, 1383s. Innovative Surface Solutions, $5,456. That's our chloride. Another one for $5,445. Matt Morris Excavating, $3,400.
That was for the town green equipment.
Vermont League of Cities and Towns Property and Casualty Insurance, $2173. Wellingford Crushed Own, $3,317. And that's it, $40,371. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We're going to do another warrant tomorrow. I see Joan, she left off Matt Morris's $100 check.
I don't think that needs to be on it.
Because we issue?
Yeah.
Because it's already approved.
It's already approved. Yeah, I think the way never does it just regenerate the invoice, but it might not appear on the invoice.
Oh, okay, all right, as long as you wait, we reach all the post office, send it to wherever.
Yeah, yeah, I think when I print them, that will automatically be included in our invoice.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay. Okay, announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Can't think of any. Public comments? Valerie? The next thing on the agenda is...
There's no one on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom? Okay. So, right after the treasures report, Valerie. Treasures report.
Okay, everybody?
Hello.
Main thing is the tax bills are printed and ready to go out, and you do know them for 10th, but you're excited to pay them early if you would like. And on that subject, I just, before this meeting, I did the first draw on the line of credit. So you'll see when we... Okay, that's... Yeah, why don't we look at that one first? That's, this is the cash flow as of today. Not, not all that much going on, but if you want to go down a little bit, you'll see our cash as of today is just magically under the $100,000 where I'd like it not to go below. So that's why I did the first draw. And, there you go, 95. So that's why I did the first draw, and that'll come into the checking account tomorrow. And that will cover all of the warrant that you just assigned. So we'll be fine. And then as soon as I get the bills out, the money will start coming in. So we probably will not need to do more than the one draw. Unless, unless something, yeah.
It's a rather expensive truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that has reserve funds.
It comes out of the reserve account, so that should be okay. So that's, that is the August cash flow. But if you want to look at July, I think we didn't discuss that yet. Okay. So, so I was having to move a lot of money around between the reserve account and the general fund. As you can see, that Weaver check that you signed, I had to make sure that that got transferred back into the general fund to cover it. Also, you see just a couple lines below that is another interfund transfer. That's just basically checks that you've been approving that are the actual cash flow that's coming out of the reserve account. So that's why you see a lot of money moved around in July. That total receipts were, you think that we were very rich, but you look down, you'll see all that money went out again too. So the buy behalf dispersments were almost that same, basically the same amount. So that's how we were left at the end of July with under 50,000. But that's further depleted now, briefly. If you want to look at the reserve account spreadsheet, then you see all that. The other side of all of those calculations you were just looking at, there's that Class 3 road, that's the Weaver check we've talked about. Leaving that briefly in pretty depleted cash position, that's going to, we've got a grant that's coming in.
Yeah, 200,000 is going to be reimbursed on that. So it's what was expected.
Yeah, so don't get frightened by that. So if we look down, you know, the ARPA funding is still doing the heavy lifting in the reserve account. You can see that the second from the bottom. But you'll, I know that you've got ideas on how to spend that, so that's not going to be there forever. But any questions about any of that?
And all the negatives in this year, we are eliminated when we credit this year because these are funds into...
Yeah. When the, Dave and I talked about that 830 line, that's the professional audit, and it's so silly that it's constantly in the negative. That's a many years old negative that we just need to remember to ask our auditor to make that go back assigned to the general fund, because that first year it was not, we didn't have the reserve account.
We didn't have it. Yeah, actually, I would like to move it, when Jordan comes this year, I'd like to move it back into the regular budget line, because we've been doing it for years now, we're going to continue doing it, doesn't really even need to be reserved fund. We know how much it costs the following year, just put it in the budget. Yeah, we did get caught the first year, because when this is credited with this year's reserve funds, this is going to be like $2,000 in the negative, which takes us back to where we started.
Yeah, it's very old.
Yeah, it's really old, and we need a professional CPA to say it, but we need to clear this. It's not a real number, actually.
It's a very old number.
Yeah.
Any, nothing, any other questions about any of that? So it's all taxes all the time for me right now. I'm going to hope to get them out the door. I hope that I'll have them mailed by this weekend or very early next week, depending on how many other things take over my time between now and then. Okay?
Any questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, roadside debris. Probably three or four months ago, somebody brought to my attention that garbage cans are staying out beside the road, other than the day they're supposed to be picked up. And we had some cases where bears or dogs were tipping them over, strolling along the road. I think the town crew actually helped me pick up one of them. And then Valerie Schemeth, when she come up, Valerie called the... Called up and said, "We ought to pick up the sofas alongside the road." But we'll get into that discussion later. But afterwards, I also talked to Mike Ianati, and it's a problem out in, not just in town, but out in Shasberry Hollow with garbage cans staying there all the time. And come winter time, when they're plowing, they either have to plow around them, or kick them out of the way and do a good job of pushing back the snow, so. But we don't have an ordinance. Let's hear what you've got to say, if you've got any ideas.
Sure, for those of you don't know me, my name's Valerie Schemeth. I live on Cross Hill Road, and I drive up and down White Creek Road every day. That's how I have to leave and come. I just brought a picture in case you all want to see this. I brought, I called the town, and I was looking to Art and asked to show up tonight, which I'm happy to do. These are two pieces of furniture that have been out there at least two months. I just noted that they were there, and then I started trying to think back how long they've been out there. You can see the grass is growing around them and so on. And sadly, as I was driving over here today, there's yet two more pieces of furniture that someone else has placed out there. And to say that it's unsightly, I think would be an understatement.
We understand.
Yeah, it's pretty tacky, and it really just reflects poorly on all of Shasberry. You know, most people are diligent about keeping their lawns and junk cars, you know, without grass growing up to the windows and so on. At least where you can't, cannot see them. Or they're nice enough, like some residents, to build a 10-foot fence and put all behind the fence, which works for me, and so on.
So for us to send the town crew out and pick them up, we can't do it. And once we, if we ever started that...
Everybody needs to get rid of a...
Yeah, and it costs us money. I mean, we would have to pay, the town would have to pay, and that is...
I'm sure that's why they're out there, they don't want to pay.
Right, that's absolutely true. So the other thing is an ordinance, and then, and we get really, Dave can explain this better than I can, but an ordinance, we don't have an ordinance, but if we were to pass one, how do you enforce it? You can't, one of us can't go around because we are not law enforcement officers. So you would have to be enforced by a citizen making a complaint, actually signing the complaint, testifying, and all that sort of stuff. And then I don't even know where it goes from there, Dave.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at this, I understand from someone today that this started with other furniture around it, like come and pick what you want.
I never saw that.
I didn't see it.
You didn't see that either? We can maybe think of other stuff.
I just noticed that...
But look at this, I'm just thinking, well, maybe we ought to look at a strict, straight litter ordinance, because this is litter. You know, we have stuff that's tossed roadside, but secluded out of the way places in the town right of way, which we pick up. But this was put out in front of the house, so it isn't by the homeowner. So maybe just say, let me look, there might even be a state ordinance on litter. Let me look at it that way first, just addressing litter. Because even though these are couches, it's still litter. I mean, it's the same thing. This is definitely appears to be in the right of way, and maybe they do just expect us to come around and pick it up, but we're forced to collect enough stuff to create expense to the town every year, and we don't need to start adding to it. But let's see what we can do to prod these people along.
All right. Mike brought it to my attention about the garbage cans out in Shasberry Hollow. And I can understand, people have these long driveways, they got their houses off the road, and so they leave the garbage cans, they go to work in the morning, drop the garbage in the thing.
Well, you pay extra, they go up, then they go up the driveway.
Probably.
Yeah, it's a small amount. I have that because I'm on the main, on Main Road and Castle Road, and I pay a gasoline, it's not very much, I think it's $5 or $7. It's certainly not prohibitive. And then they back their vehicle, and they take it spring, summer, winter, fall.
But what's happening is that the bears have learned that this is a good source of food. And so the town ends up, I think, sometimes picking up trash that's in the road. And then, and then the poor, I talked to the guy running the garbage truck, and he is pulling his hair out because he has, he has to get out at every stop. The whole thing is designed to pick it up.
Right, right, right.
But he's got to get out and set the can up, or kick, kick the stuff back into the can so that he can get it into the truck, and that really is not...
Well, again, it goes back to the homeowner's responsible to pick up the garbage in the roadway. And it goes, it's litter, and it's yours, and it's your litter. If the bear puts it out there, that's your fault. And I had the same situation, I have bears in my yard all the time, so my garbage goes down first thing in the morning at daylight. I have the same thing, I walk to the end of my driveway, never put it in the road, because I'll never complain about not being able to swing it around. And when it's snowing, I don't put it in the right of way. And it still gets picked up. I think they understand that, you know, you can't have it both ways. We can't move every garbage can, and even mowing. You know, they're using the boom to push the can back a little bit so they can mow. I mean, it's, it's a difficult one to deal with, but it's the owner's responsibility. And they may like to swing the trucks up to the arm, but it's impractical. This isn't an urban area where you drive down all over the street and take things up. There's no sidewalk, you're just in the way. And if it's snowing, you know, what is that, the end of the driveway? And with bears, I mean, ours is in the garage until the morning I leave for work, and I walk down to the end of my driveway, because they're not going to be there in the day. They come around at night and do it. We have lots of bears by me, and it's something you get used to.
Is this a new problem?
Well, I, no, I think it's becoming...
On White Creek Road, that is a problem. It's a huge problem. Are they renters?
You know, I have a feeling those places are, because there's a, I don't know for a fact, that there's a large number of apartments there that appear to have rentals. Because sometimes you'll see four or five cars for one place, you know, several people living in one place, sharing rent most likely. But it's, you know, it's one of the main thoroughfares, so it's really just like, not that it's any better on the back roads, but actually, the back roads, I live in the back roads, and so a lot of people, they're really great. You know, we're all taking care of our own property, and our own carpet, and our own whatever, bare skunks, et cetera. It's a shame you have to legislate, but maybe that's the direction.
Yeah. I think maybe look at similar towns that have some kind of litter ordinance, rather than getting into too specific a thing. Because even these chairs, it doesn't matter, there's no size requirement for litter, if this could be considered litter too. That would be more, that would be easier to enforce than anything like regulating, putting cans in and out.
Okay.
Because literally, you can just say, you know, it's yours. It's, you know, you actually have to catch someone in the act of littering, or you can identify it through something in the garbage. I actually turned some stuff over to either the sheriff or the state police a dozen years ago, they had names of. Of course, nobody wants to do anything, but we did get to pick it up, so.
Being an ordinance, how is it, how does it activate it? How, how do you start to process? It still has to be...
It requires, you saw somebody, you can't drive down the road and see something and go, it must belong to that house. You have to see someone throw it out, and they can be charged with litter.
So you would have to see them put their garbage down there?
Yeah, you would have to, you know, in this case, Mike...
I don't think you... Not into a garbage can, like...
Well, a garbage can is a garbage can, but if the stuff comes out of your garbage can, I, you know, I'm not going to talk about this, it's just like, it's, you know it's yours. It's your social responsibility to go pick it up. And maybe they would have, when they got back from work, maybe if they're pulling out the driveway at 7:00 in the morning, they look, as I've done several mornings, when I see my garbage bags spooned over the yard before I realize I have to keep them in my garage all night and then walk the can down in the morning, maybe they would have picked it up in the afternoon. They got out once or twice and did pick up some bags, but, you know, I don't know how frequent that is. There are a lot, there's a lot of bear around this year, so I think it's kind of piquing the issue this year. Yeah, you know, other than, I don't know what you call that, you know, you can't go after a smoky, so you gotta, you gotta, it's really just, like I said, kind of a social responsibility to clean up, it's your garbage, you know, go out and clean it up. And I agree, it's not my favorite thing to do when, before I got snored about it, is go out and get the shovel and the rake and everything, try and pick all this up before I go to work, but...
I'm not on this select board, but it seemed to me that other towns must have policies and procedures, or other cities, or other municipalities that could be replicated here.
Yeah, I'll just search around for, see if anybody has anything creative for this You know, there's, there's things, I know there are things where you can say that cans can only be put down within 24 hours of the scheduled pickup, and must be taken back in within 24 hours of the scheduled pickup.
But then you need somebody to, you need, or you need somebody to go ticket everybody that's not, and we don't have that mechanism, and it wouldn't be enforceable in any way, shape, or form. We could have it on the books.
Yeah, be on the books.
But it wouldn't, like many of the ordinances we have, don't do anything except we can say, oh, here it is. So it doesn't really solve the issue of actually fixing the problem.
Someone has to go out and see and sign a claim, and know that that can has been out there.
And be willing to testify for it, and sign an affidavit in order for it to go forward, and then it potentially goes to court, it potentially doesn't, and it just languishes.
Were you watching my can for 24 hours?
Yeah, so it, it's hard to enforce it, I think.
And then walled it out, so I still have to...
Even if it's on the books.
It's the way it is, you know, towns have the junk ordinances, and, you know, you have to be offended. Well, you can't send somebody out to be offended for you. You have to sign the complaint. And of course, nobody wants to actually sign the complaint.
Because then you can have repercussions, legal, legal issues, and other things.
Not necessarily legal, but other...
Yeah, 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 so let me look into, this is, this is bad. I'll park it this, see what we can figure out.
Yeah, the upbeat side maybe would be, I'm just, you know, in front of business, but when people do the right thing, they get rewards. So maybe you could have some sort of system where, you know, House of the Month or whatever. So I don't know, a free ticket somewhere to Lake Shasberry, so they wouldn't cost anybody any money.
Or a year's free access to the transfer station. I mean, this is the biggest reason to use the transfer station in my mind, you know? No bear problem.
But the Casella cans, by the way, mind blower, we're all the time, garbage district all over the place. But we're responsible people, so we're scooping it up and putting it back in the can. But I'm sure that's not always the case, you know? I'm sure the Casella people have a lot of issues when they're cleaning up, collecting all this garbage, because they're pretty good people. And they do jump out of their truck and pick up every can.
It might be something to send around pre-winter, it's like you can't park on the street, and so maybe we should put stuff up, and please remember, you know, your can is going to get waxed, because I don't expect anyone to stop the truck and restart it when the garbage cans out of the way.
I was only suggesting, seriously, there might be better, there would be awards for those law-abiding citizens, instead of, you know, everybody pointing their finger at his stuff on the ground.
Yeah, yeah, and that just, again, Mike was saying, a lot of those, those is like that just wind up sitting collecting dust. Do anything about it, of course, it's always a problem.
I'm a nurse by profession, and there's a health issue to nasty...
Well, that we can, that we can always address and have, but it's a cycle with just being out for a day, or, you know, if it gets spooned out and it's laying there for a period of time, then we could get into a health issue, but, you know, if it's delivery day and the bear got in overnight, that might be pushing that a little bit, kind of help that a little bit.
Why don't you spend until the next meeting, trying to find, and we'll put it on next month, on our next agenda. Okay?
Do you need me any further?
No. And thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You too, thanks.
The mic's on you.
Yep.
We have a DPW report.
I can read the DPW report, and let's see, well, we just talked about the trash cans. So, let's see, Buck Hill paving project, obviously, is a big one, that's putting off a few other things. There's a whole series of culverts they're replacing, going all the way up to East Road, but that's moving on quite well. They have changed out 11 culverts, and they're paying six of them done, and five more to go. The paving, culvert crossings, that'll gravel this week. So they let the gravel sew in and get hit by cars, and then they topcoat it before the paving company comes. Paving is scheduled to happen the first week in September, which is unfortunate because we actually plan to have it done in August, but everything's behind because the paving is 279. And that's the first week in September, depending on, if Teckham Pottery Plant is finished with the state paving project on 279, because the state paving requirement for that road is completely different than what municipalities use. So they have to like finish that job and then open it up to us and the other towns. Yep, as Mike says, they're using a special mix in Camp Leuser mix, some projects are completely different. The next two weeks, road grading will be on Maple Hill, Old Depot Road, Lake Shasberry Road, Holy Smoke, and Cider Mill Road. And of course, some touch-ups with all this rain we're getting, we're getting, you know, some roads that they'll probably have to hit also. Matt Morris is going to finish the excavation project in the park this week, the weather lets him. And if this was to get an inch and a half or more rain in the next 24 hours, that probably won't happen. And Kurt's excavation is scheduled to start the Trumbull Hill drainage project, a week of all this 28. Park mowing and maintenance is continuing. The new park back here, I must say, Mike and the crew did a great job leveling that out and bringing in 25 truckloads of topsoil, wheat...
Holy moly.
It looks wonderful.
It looks great.
And it's all seeded, and it wasn't highly seeded, because it's so wet, we don't really need to highly seed. Did a great job compacting the new little parking area, too. We do have a split rail fence, they'll have a vehicle opening, there'll be a gate, so completely locked off, and pedestrian doorways, ports, whatever you want to call it, if you can walk through the gate onto the field. But we do want some form of fencing there. The fence is going to be set about a foot into gravel area, so we don't have to worry about a lot of weed whacking to keep it looking nice. We're also going to move fencing up to Howard Park, because we have to rent an auger for this, so when we do this, we're going to move it up to Howard Park, because I want to do a same split rail fence from the edge of the tennis court around the whole back of the parking lot to keep people from driving up, people drive up to the back there, you know, do donuts and everything else, it's a play area, but that's where the dog park is going. And so, you know, we want to keep people out of there, and...
Is the opening for the cars going to be big enough for like a trailer in case we have food trucks, or other, it's going to be, okay, to kind of, okay? I just wanted to make sure, in case there, or there are bands or something that, you know, need to have a...
Well, when we do the pavilion, those trucks and vehicles are going to have to get there.
Right.
But yeah, it'll be big enough for a yard truck.
For something to go through, okay?
When is the dog park coming in, and how big is it going to be?
Dog park is, well, that's still debatable, how big it will be, but it'll be big enough. We have...
Big enough for miniature poodle? Bess in hell, or what?
I haven't mentioned it out... I haven't measured it out in a long time, so I can't remember the exact dimensions. But as you go to the back of the parking lot, part of this project was the government swale, to take the water that comes down the side of the little slope there, and will take it off to the natural wetlands area to the side. So that water would infiltrate where the dog park will go. The dog park is going to basically take that square area in the back. So, but we haven't started that because we have a number of projects left to do. We have the $5,000 donation to start it, which I don't even think will buy the fencing, and I don't want to make it too small, because then that's a waste of time. So it may not get completed till next year. That's why I want to get the split rail fence up this year, just to keep people out. Because people driving the trucks back there are going to hit the swale, probably don't care, and then damage the swale, and then we're back to zero again. So we just spent a lot of time and money and contractors taking out trees behind the tennis courts, which were damaging the tennis court by things from the trees, leaves, and everything else, and shading the tennis courts too much, and also infiltrating underneath with the roots and everything. So we took them down and stumped them. There's a whole drainage system between the tennis courts and the parks, and so a lot of it can't really be seen. There's all new culverts up there, too, but, you know, this is the foundation for the future of the park. And like I said, next year we'll start getting the tennis courts, which need repair or replacement. I'm not sure which at this point, but no point in looking at that if we still have the water infiltrating underneath. So, but that's moving along, and I think that's turning into a good project. And he'll be on vacation next week, starting Thursday. So let's do a DPW report.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Okay, reappraisal order. We've known right along that, in fact, we've already contracted with them to do it, but we got the official notification from the state that says that we have to reappraise. And there is a place where a response must be signed by the chair of the legislative body of the municipality or their designee. So I guess what we're doing is asking, we're asking you to make a motion that I sign this, that we acknowledge that we are, that we have to do a reappraisal. It doesn't say that we're doing it. I think it just says.
Just we have to do it.
We just acknowledge we have to do it. Okay?
Yeah.
So moved. Moved by Tony.
Makes sense.
We have a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero. Oh, I probably ought to, that was a motion by Tony, second by Mike. She probably has to hear us, didn't she, or do you write all this down?
Uh, well, it's all being recorded.
Yeah, well, I didn't say it, so that's why I'm saying it.
Oh.
I didn't say Mike, so that's, that was it.
So it's triggered by the fact, yeah.
It's triggered, though there's a.
Because our, our.
Twenty percent is, we're over.
Our CLA is off, so now this is, we knew this because our professional associate said, this is what it's going to be. So he told us months ago, this is where we're heading. That's why we're already on the list, because when people get these letters, lots of towns are going to try and pull it off as long as they can, but when you get the letter, you're out of time. So we're already contracted for this anyway.
And the money is, we've got the money.
The money's been stored up for years. It's like $210,000 or something. Because the state pays the town for each parcel every year, put away in a reserve fund for reappraisal. So, yeah, we have the money.
Okay, so I'm signing this. Grant agreement, GI.
Yeah, this is a grant name agreement. We get these once or twice every year through the state. This one, and we were awarded $27,500, dispensed before September 30th of next year. It has a match of $6,875. We're just asking for the board to give me permission to sign, accepting the grant. We do not have a designated place to use this money yet, which is common in grant names. We do go out with VCRC, who's now part of the program to administer this. It used to be done directly to the state, but they're involved in it now. So what happens is, Mike gets together with Jim Henderson down there. We go to one of the places on our many, many from the list of things we have to repair under the municipal general, general road permit. And they'll pick one of the, or spots like, well, that's what Kurtz is going to start in a few weeks, is another one of these spots, under another grant name. So we'll just go to the next one on the list, or whichever one has deteriorated the most, and we'll fix that one for this amount of money. So.
Entertain a motion to have Dave sign this document.
I move.
It's a motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, five zero zero.
Get it back.
Now we can get into our discussion. Okay. Bylaw adoption process under Home Act. So this, I was always in the impression the town could decide which way they wanted to go. Have the ordinance adopted by the select board, a waiting period. If there's no petition, it became in effect, or, or it, the select board adopts it, it goes before Australian ballot, and is accepted by the people or turned down by the people. But there's lots of discussion over which way it is.
Apparently, a lot of towns now either skip the select board or skip the public. Right? But, but anyway, the Home Act, we had been told by Janet Hurley on the planning commission that the Home Act was changed to read that it can't go in front of, that it has to go to the select board.
It has to be adopted by the select board.
You know, it has to be adopted by the select board, and then that has to be it. It can't go to Australian ballot unless somebody petitions with a 5% signature rate. And the only piece of paper I've seen that said that is the email from Janet. And then this is something that Shelley gave to Dave, right?
Yeah.
This is a little different in the way it's written.
To me, reads differently, and giving the option to the select board to say, I want, we want it to go to.
To Australian ballot.
Which, you know.
It has the word or right there. It says or.
Yeah. It seemed, I read it many times. It seemed really clear.
Yes, I was, I was confused when Shelley brought this up, and I thought it'd be worthwhile, not that anything's really going to take place tonight, but that the board would be aware that this is, you know, a fairly significant change in denying the residents the ability to vote on having their own property.
I agree.
For adoption.
You know, so if, we have to get an interpretation of this. I might, if the board wants, I might call Merrill and ask how she reads this. And then maybe we can call Dave Durfee and have him kind of explain what the intent of this was.
Okay.
This, this overall act that was passed on, like, July 5th and took effect July 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there is probably 50 things that we have to be coming in compliance with very shortly.
That we had to be compliant with, starting July 1st.
And ours, triggering all sorts of issues.
Every other town, the state is not compliant.
We are not in compliance with a bunch of things.
And that no one's had a voice in, that.
I mean, they were mostly geared clearly towards making it easier to create affordable housing.
Yes.
And they were in a rush about that. And I think we can all imagine that came from the motel debacle.
Yeah.
So they were sort of backpedaling, I think, and doing this retroactively before they left, but it left a mess.
Many, many, many fundamental parts of local zoning.
Yeah, really, big, big stuff.
Big cases.
But I think first, we just have to confirm that this is the new statute, not an old one. Because if this is the new statute, I mean, I don't think there's any question, right?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like it's the same old way.
We don't have to ask a lawyer, right?
No, I'll confirm, I will confirm that this is the wording of the statute, and then I would think that the interpretation you were given is just wrong.
So we're going to discuss this next meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Shelley gave this to me and said, you know, thinks that everybody should be aware of it, and put it on the net, so everybody's aware. And if you want to take some time to some synopses of the Home Act, that you might be interested in reading, because it is quite.
It's extensive.
Seventy-six pages.
It's extensive.
Well, yeah, Dave has a synopsis.
Yeah, it's like in the synopsis here.
It's several pages.
I just started highlighting some of them that caught my eye, and it goes on and on and on. And this is the synopsis of all the wording in that part of the law, so.
And Shelley took a fine-tooth comb to it, I think, and came up with, I believe, it's 21 of the items.
Things that we need to change our, yeah.
So we're required to come into compliance with this new.
Which is already in effect.
Which is in effect from July 1, yes.
How do you even do that, I thought?
I think what they always said is right. They got in a panic over the end of the motel thing, and they thought up every single way to increase housing and just passed it without any regard for the community's effect.
But a lot of it, it looks like it's going to be fairly easy to change the bylaws on, because the law, the law, the act gives us the language.
Well, yeah.
It's very mandatory, but it's very clear.
They mandated how a community is run, without any input from the communities themselves, which I find, well, typical. I'm just an employee, so.
Typical.
I'll be quiet.
This particular piece of it here, though, is just relating to how bylaws are, but are we saying that this retroactively would affect things that were passed?
No, not for a town meeting this year, but it would affect town meeting next year.
As we try to come into compliance.
Right. Right now.
So, so if we were to propose bylaw changes before the end of this year, they would come under the way that Shaffsbury has been working it, they wouldn't come into being until March, right?
But if it's.
Actually, March of next year, I mean, of 25.
Twenty.
Twenty-five.
But if this.
Because we're too late already.
Right, and we have a whole bunch that are coming for 24.
But if, and if this is the right language, then it sounds like we can decide, the select board, either to continue to do what we have been doing, or to change it so that the public has no say.
Well, they do, because there's a public hearing in which they come. So it isn't completely removing the issue, but yes. But I think it was, yes, but it was a streamlined approach, I think, to getting bylaws into effect quickly, as opposed to waiting every town meeting day to have them go before the ballot, because the planning commission right now has four or five items that will not be into the bylaws that are directly due to housing until they get voted on in March of 24, and some that will not get voted on until March of 25. And this was a way for them to say, let's get this moving, let's get these ordinances on the, bylaws on the books, so that we can start making meaningful change on housing, I think is the.
In an immediate way. But of course, it would continue to be, I mean, this is the kind of.
That was the impetus of things.
It continued to be in effect.
People had no say in it.
Right. But this was, I think, the impetus of why they, they were trying to get these bylaws out of the queue line and to vote.
But they didn't do it as a temporary measure. They did it as a permanent one.
And it wasn't just for housing ordinance bylaws, it was for every bylaw, as opposed to just.
We need Dave Durfee sitting here.
Yeah.
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 Okay. And you're going to kind of check in this.
Yeah, I'll make sure what version of this we have here. But see, yeah, some of these interpretations, like what you heard is.
Well, and I don't know if this was, I don't know if this was the language that I read initially. And so I may have been reading an old draft. That's the other thing, and that's how I interpreted.
I'll go up on the legislative website tomorrow, and I'll get it to the audience.
And if this is the final one.
See what this actually says.
It's very different than what I read.
Isn't it true that not every town does it? Like, in some towns, the select board can pass bylaws, and, but.
Rural communities, the select board passes bylaws that doesn't go to, just an example, because I'm in a place in Sunderland, and we're doing some bylaws, and I was lobbying for the select board not approve these, but to put them to Australian ballot, because I think the voters should have the ability to say what takes place in the town. And I know of bylaws that were passed in that system that surprised people, like I was just results, you know, because public hearings don't really provide the access for people to vote on how they want to live. It's an important aspect of people's lives, which you mean voting on. But rural towns, if our the select board passed them, they don't have to vote, uh, votes. It doesn't go to, like ours do to the town meeting, the can. But normally, like the last time bylaws were passed in that town, it was just the select board that was passed. It's pretty common in smaller towns.
Yeah.
Okay. So hopefully, next meeting, Dave Durfee can.
Yeah, I'll get some of that, Dave.
And also, you're going to.
And I'll send around, I'll find this section in the actual legislation and send it to everybody, because so we know what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Further discussion in that? Okay, we're up to other business. Martha, the Economic Development Committee.
We have two different things to actually bring up. One of them was circulated. It was a press release just saying that we have restarted the Economic Development Committee and that we're taking the ARPA recommendations and kind of operationalizing them. So the language got sent out in our packet to do, and we need to vote on it so that it goes out as one voice from the town.
Entertain a motion. Did everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, five zero zero.
The other thing that's coming out from the Economic Development Committee is that we are hoping to send out a survey very shortly, because we have a very quick time turnaround with some of our grants, to ask people what they'd like to see in, on the town green, but also the community center, which were two of the big priorities from the ARPA money surveys. So we have created a survey, and I don't know if we need to have any discussion or approval for that to go out, but it is basically four questions. It's asking, what do you want on the town green? And with some checked options, what do you want in your community center with some checked options? How did you find out about it? And I think one demographic question. And, and that's it. And it would be going out online, as well as, there will be paper copies at kind of all the places that the ARPA survey was at, for folks to fill out. We've given them about a month or so to get it done, and then collect them and get, turn it around, so that we can then come back to the board as a, from the EDC's perspective of what they're asking for, so that we can then go after grants to get that kind of stuff, so.
My opinion is just send the survey out.
Yeah. I think in the past, it's always been like with the rec survey and that, it was just discussed at the board.
Okay. And it will go out, you know, on Facebook, we'll put it on the, the town website. We'll try to get it out and get as many folks as we can to get it. Okay.
We certainly don't want to micromanage that.
Right. I just, I didn't think so, but I just.
The press release has the connotation as an official.
For things.
Yes.
But just so you know, and hopefully you'll all fill it out as well when it comes out and lands in your box. Great.
Okay.
That's great, Martha.
Thank you very much.
It's great. It's one more step as we kind of keep working on these ARPA priorities.
And Sarah is very well done. It's very. It's very concise, I like.
We try.
Yeah.
What's the one demographic? How do you ask only one demographic?
I don't even remember what the demographic is. I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, I don't even remember what the demographic was.
I want to say it was age. I think it was age, actually. Yeah.
Yeah, which would be informative to what we're talking about.
Right, and some of our grant language.
Yeah, because I need that to finish the plan. I need more words.
Well, I wrote down, another thing to talk about was money for, but I can't read my writing. What was it for?
Oh, that was when we did the enhanced energy program for BCRC. We said we would find the money. Well, we still have to find the money. I do not intend to pay that bill until they're done. I got the full bill a month, uh, last week, and checking today with Shelley, we're nowhere near the end, so.
They're not even planning to give us the first draft until the end of August. And they're saying the second draft will be done like in November.
Yeah.
Don't pay them.
Which is completely off from the schedule because it was supposed to be by October that it was to us to kind of vote on, so.
It brought to my attention that we said we'll, we'll find the way, but we never really discussed how to find the way. So we're back with GW Hawkins Fund that it's not going to pay it, but I'm going to write up a request, I'll make it the next meeting, to have money transferred from Hawkins to the general fund so that we can pay this bill when it's actually due. You know, that's going to use the Hawkins Fund because it's more an unexpected kind of thing. There was urgency to that because of the solar situation we were in, and otherwise we wouldn't have been able to start that until next July. So that was way too late, so.
So we're going, we're going to discuss, or we're going to take action on it then.
I will write up a thing, I'll bring it into the next meeting and put it out there. There'll also be requests to the board trustees also. There's a donation was made for Howard Park, $47,000, most of which has just gone into the construction at Howard Park. So the park reserve fund is running a deficit of like $38,000, so we just have to move, it was always intended to come from the trustees, so we're going to move that over. And I'll, another thing I'll bring into the next meeting to make that transfer, that request. So another request is on the requests. Two years ago, the board approved $45,000 for GW Hawkins to build a structure for the transfer station to house Greg and that. That kind of never appeared because I was appalled at what people were telling me we needed. So Mike and I have been looking at a variety of pre-built sheds, you know, nice little bits, little porch and everything, you know. But I greatly reduce costs that we can just plant on the ground, insulate ourselves, hire the electrician, put in the electricity, air conditioner like mine, heater, will weigh that way down. Because the original things, I think you might remember, with the architect.
Just the architect was.
It was like, wait a minute, this is exploding out of control, so. I'm trying to buy that trailer they would sell to me, so it's like, okay, well then, I'm going to go buy something. So I don't know why they would sell it to me, but it's a nice trailer. They're all homey, you know? You know, there's all kinds of things to buy, but not for what was originally proposed. So that I hope to have by next meeting or the meeting after, so do our request to the trustees at once.
Any other business? I have one thing. The Memorial Day Parade has always been going back and forth between North Bendington and Shaftesbury. The next one is going to be in Shaftesbury. It's always been kind of up in the air, the Veterans Committee in years past has done a very good job and that sort of stuff, but they've kind of fallen apart. And I talked to Marlene if she would take on at least the responsibility of making sure that this goes forward. And by doing that, the town now has the insurance covers it, covers everybody. We have the authority to close the roads, you know, close the street and that sort of stuff, whereas before, the Veterans Committee really didn't have. And so this makes it just a lot more formal, a lot more official is the right word, okay? So if that's agreeable with everybody, probably take a motion then. And Marlene says she's going to want help, obviously, but she's willing to, and she did most of it last time, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
What would the motion be then to?
Become, the, the town become the organizer, the sponsor.
Sponsor, organizer is better word. Organizer of the Memorial Day Parade of Shaftesbury comes out.
All right, I'll make a motion that the town become the official organizer of the Memorial Day Parade.
I have a motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Tony. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. I don't have anything more. Is anybody else?
I was just sent in one, one thing, and just so it's in the minutes of the meeting, that the town charter has been picked up by Co-File, which is a restoration company, and they are working on preserving it and treating it, so that I haven't been for a long time.
Along with the deed?
I, I, I'm not sure of the deed. I just know the charter, odd that they have a deed.
I think we voted on sending the deed up, too, didn't you?
We did.
It probably is. Marlene did not mention the deed to me, but Co-File picked up the charter. Just so it's in the minutes for those who are asking, because it was asked by a few people.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Naomi. Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It was a long one. We got a lot done. Yes, we did.
Yeah.